Yep, we are recording.
Oh, good. Awesome. All right. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Sure thing. Nice to see you.
You too. Thanks. All right, I'm gonna go hop out. Have a good one.
Thank you.
This is my favorite school committee meeting.
I know. This is. I agree. I agree. I was. My wife is generally my go-to person to do the calligraphy on the certificate for this. And. And she was like, oh, what a beautiful name, Annabelle. And I was like, yeah, she's an amazing. She's a beautiful kid, too. Which, which, you know, tends to be the way every year. This, this just, it winds up being this remarkable group of young people over the years.
Yeah.
How's, how's Eva feeling?
Well, she went to school today, but.
Did she make it?
She did.
On her and I ran out of, ran out of day. Okay.
She made it. It wasn't fantastic, but she got there.
Okay. Well. It's tough. We have, I think in our seventh grade. I was chatting with Mary McDonald yesterday, and I think like thirty percent of their kids were absent yesterday.
Gosh.
It's.
Bad. I think it's, and it's everything, too. I think COVID like sort of lulled, but now it's back and flu's back and RSV and. There's some.
And I.
Don't make bug.
Yeah, I think the conventional wisdom is, you know, going back to the days when we were just worried about the flu. It's like, well, just shut school down for a couple of days. It's like. Kids are, kids are gonna be together. Even if we shut it down, they're gonna be together and, and folks have to go to work and.
True that.
So it's like, I, I think we're just gonna put our heads down. We have masks available. And. Yeah. I don't know. I haven't looked at like any of the hospital numbers or how they're doing. I haven't seen.
I haven't really looked either. Nobody's dashboards are as dramatic as they used to be, so.
No, no.
Just sort of seem to take the pulse and if. It's kind of like if the Eagle reports on it, I notice it, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not like it was. A year and a half ago where you, where you check the dashboard every single day to see. What was happening and where and in what amount.
Right.
Oh. When's, when's Kayden finished?
Today was his last day of classes. He said it was the toughest week of his life. I'm sure a lot of people can. Yeah. And then he, his finals are next week, I think. I can't remember. He only has two finals, interestingly enough. They must. Some classes must not require them.
Yeah, or, or they do like projects. Up to the, maybe that's why this week was so brutal.
Yeah.
Oh, good for him. First semester under his belt.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Under your belt.
Now we have to figure out how to pay for next semester. We are waiting to find out if he would. Want to continue on before we looked at that bill.
Yeah, that is the, yeah. Yeah. It is like our, our two sons both. You know, the, the day that you could go on and apply for some student loan forgiveness, they went on and applied and. They're both out of their minds that it's being hung up by lawsuits. I like, guys, I paid mine off. You, you have proportionally for, for what you make nowadays, you have less than I have. You'll figure it out.
Yeah.
But. Yeah, I do hope for the sake of the people that really, really not only could use it but need it. I really hope some, I hope the courts.
Yeah.
Allow this to happen.
When does your daughter get out? Because I know she said she started later.
She, I think her last final is on the nineteenth.
Okay, that's not too bad.
Yeah, and it's, it's like, I think it's an in-person, some, a couple of hers are, you know, you just do it online. And, but I think their classes. Like tomorrow might be their last day of classes tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday. And I know she had a, I know she had a final this week and something because her roommate is super, super sick and. Meredith, she's just afraid of getting it and not sleeping well and. Like, you know, you go to school an hour away, you could come and sleep at home. And then drive in the next morning and. It's like, well, I might miss something. I might miss something. Although she is driving, she is, I think she just got home. I think her mom just texted me. There's a pair of. Boots that she wanted. That's, that we couldn't deliver to her, so I guess it's too much work to come home to sleep, but for.
Her boots.
The pair of boots you want to wear this weekend. Completely doable.
I love it. All about fashion.
It's all about fashion. Yeah, she, she said, you know, she's going to Italy over, over the, the break. And so she's like, well, I have, I have to break these in because I'm taking them to Italy.
I see. That makes sense.
Tough life.
Rough. Yes. Rough, rough, rough.
The nice thing is though, because she has saved her money from the time she was a little kid to go to Europe. The, the only thing we have paid for thus far, I think I paid for her passport, which she didn't have, and we bought her a suitcase. And otherwise she's dealt with it. Or like. You know, our brothers are like, we didn't get to go to Europe when we were sophomores in college. I'm like, guys, you. You know. Our oldest, it's like you would have had to have taken a loan to buy a pack of gum from your dad. When you were a sophomore in college because of your habits, so.
That's funny.
So are you doing this? Are you, you're doing this from the command center, right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's why I never know like where to look. That's really weird. And I'm sure he doesn't like it because I mess with things to make, you know.
He has to spend tomorrow morning.
Undoing what I did.
Getting it back to his. His space, yeah.
Can't believe it. Five fifty-five? Everyone's gonna be right on time today.
Pushing it tonight. Pushing it tonight. It's amazing. I was talking to my, one of our kids on the phone. And I looked out the window and I don't think it's a full moon. I think last night was the last of the full moon, but it was unbelievable.
Nice.
And I went outside to see it and there was this sort of cloud that was just barely big enough to cover the moon. And it was like. It was like something out of a cartoon. It's like. This campus, I just almost daily you get some. Impact of nature that it's like, okay, I gotta stop and just look at this for a minute. It's unbelievable.
Beautiful. It is. It is so beautiful. Although I don't miss the drive in the winter, I do miss the drives up there for the meetings because I would always see beautiful things.
Yeah, yeah.
The winter was tough because it was drive in the dark.
That is hard.
Get out of your car in the wind.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I think the governor's order, what, that expires in March, right?
It does. Yep, March twelfth.
We'll see. See what transpires. That will be. The new governor's call, I guess, so.
Yeah, I've been, I've been watching what other school committees do and it seems pretty standard for. They do that sort of hybrid thing where everyone has a computer in front of them, I think for Zoom.
Yeah.
So that, because there's never anyone in the audience.
Yeah. Yeah, strange, strange. I don't know. I, I have been, there's just so many things that the pandemic has made me more thoughtful and open to that I would not have given as much thought in the past and. Particularly for a regional school committee where you really have people traveling. And in our case, traveling through what could be several different types of weather to get in the winter.
Yeah, definitely.
It, it just makes a lot of sense and, and I think encourages more people to consider giving it a try.
Right. Yep. But I mean, doing that dual. You know. Meeting too, it allows for people who.
Yeah, yeah.
Want to participate to participate without the, the giant drive too. Yeah. Hi, Carrie, sorry.
Hey, Carrie.
Hey, everyone. Actually, where is everybody?
We were just saying the same thing. Everyone's pulling a Curtis tonight. Hi, Jose.
Hey Christina, everyone.
Hey, Jose.
I know Ursula will be late. For sure. So once Curtis. And Steve. And Julia show up, we should be good.
Hi, Julia. Hello.
I can't.
There's Curtis. So I think that's. Everyone for now. Jake, on your end, who are you waiting for?
We'll have Nolan getting on. And Charlotte, I thought was coming. And I'm gonna hope Jamie's not having a flashback or being traumatized by. A school committee appearance.
It's nice to be here as a guest.
Well said. Well said.
Jake, should we give Charlotte another minute?
Let's give Charlotte one more minute.
Okay.
And Annie's giving us the go-ahead to give her one more minute, so we'll.
She told me she's on her way.
Gotcha. Thank you, Annie.
Perfect. Here she is. All right, so Ursula will be joining us late, so I think we can get started. Nolan will. Fly in later, Jake. Okay, great. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, December eighth, twenty twenty-two, six oh one P M. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. This meeting will be broadcast on Willie Net TV channel thirteen oh two in Williamstown, and it will be posted on the Mount Greylock YouTube page within twenty-four hours of the meeting ending. If we could please call the role alphabetically by last name.
Owen here.
Conroy here.
Constantine here.
Elfin Byrne here.
Green here.
Miller here.
Okay, thank you. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging working environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. First on our agenda is public comment. No one has signed up through email, so I will give pause for a moment to see if anyone in the public would like to give public comment on our, any of our agenda items. Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will turn it over to Charlotte for our student spotlight.
Hello, everyone. I hope you, I hope all is well while we enter winter. We've had a great swing into our sports and plays with activities, sports beginning late November, and many have already faced competitions. The boys and girls basketball teams just had a jamboree with McCann, Drury, and Huzick attending. There was a great turnout with plenty of Mount Greylock spirit. And moving away from sports, our Oliver, Oliver, our play. Has already started their additions after a plentiful amount of successful Shakespeare plays with many, many actors and stage crews transitioning over. Mr. Welsh has help by Sam Tucker Smith, who is spearheading the musical director position with his impeccable experience. In student council, we, the council has been avidly paying attention to the conversations regarding cellphone policy. That's been brought up by administration and we're trying our best to get student input by administrating hopefully some form of questionnaire or Google form. We recently talked around to lunch tables, getting different inputs by all grade levels. And we've had Mr. Schutz and Ms. Von Holtz attend previous meetings to hear the administration and parent input. Despite a large focus of ours in the cellphone policy, the Subcommittee Greylock Talks, run by Caleb Lowe, has been planning future speakers. They had received recommendations from students and will be, be planning accordingly, hoping to bring in one to two speakers in the following months. Additionally, the school for their own speakers brought in net, a net zero from Williams College students in Williamstown and Text Less Live More. These, the Text Less Live More was a required meeting for all grades and we, it spent most of our direct study. Learning about the case of the Overland Bike Ride and the Net Zero is looking at an eco-friendly, more improved Williamstown and Berkshire County area. That is all what I have for tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. Next up on our agenda is one of my favorite items on our school committee agendas. It's the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award Presentation. So I turn it over to our superintendent, Jake McCandless.
Thanks, Christina, and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And Annie, a special welcome to you and a very special welcome to, to your family and fans that were, that were able to join us this evening. And you're smiling now, but by the end of this, you may be so flummoxed with praise that you just wanted to stop. And if, if that's true, then we've maybe achieved our goal. This is the, the twenty-first time I've been a part of having the honor of giving this award to, to a student, either as a principal or. It's my, my eighteenth as a superintendent. And Annie, I can tell you. Very, very honestly, one hundred percent truth, you, you very much keep a perfect streak alive of, of not only being recognized as a, as a really marvelous student. But, but also a really marvelous human being. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents is the statewide professional organization. Member organization for superintendents and assistant superintendents. And each year we are encouraged to recognize the, the most outstanding academic achievement among our seniors. And as I said, it, it does tend to wind up being not only a magnificently gifted and hardworking young person on their transcript and, and judging by grades. But it also, it's been my pleasure to report that, that it's been wonderful human beings as well. And I, I did, Annie, you may appreciate this, you may not, I did print out a copy of your transcript. Wow. So I, I will not embarrass you by holding it up to the camera, although I would love to, and I will not embarrass you by, by reading from it. But it is, it is as flawless of a, of, of an academic record as I have ever seen. And. It, I can assure you that. The superintendent of, of your school district academically does not even deserve to be in the same room with you. So that being said, Annie, I am going to read a, a letter that was part of your. From your guidance counselor and. You know, I, I really will, will, I'm just gonna read most of this. I cut out some pieces that I thought you might not want read out publicly. But, but I'm gonna read this and then I have something I put together for you. And then we'll introduce your parents and then you can say a few words if you would like to. Annabelle Art is an excellent student we can all admire. She is motivated, intelligent, and aware of the world beyond the classroom. She truly wants to make a difference in the world and is articulate in the way she will make an impact. What I enjoy most about working with Annie is her confidence. She knows what she wants and she goes after it. Annie Art is simply outstanding. I am consistently impressed by her academic achievements, passion for social justice and politics, and emotional intelligence. Academically, Annie is one of the most diligent students in her class. And that's actually really saying something, anybody that knows the senior class. She is a strong model student who has consistently demonstrated a high level of motivation and genuine interest for learning. She holds the esteem of the faculty for her intensity, personal initiative, and work ethic. Throughout high school, Annie is engaged in the most rigorous academic program that Mount Greylock has to offer. By the end of her high school career, she will have completed nine advanced placement courses. Annie qualified for honors level work in science and English and engaged in an accelerated mass sequence, beginning with honors geometry in grade seven. And concluding with multi-variable calculus at Williams College her senior year. She is open-minded and willing to take positive risks. Annie has made many meaningful contributions to our school and our community. She is a natural leader and displays her comfort within groups by taking charge without fanfare. She is a wonderful listener and is open-minded to others' ideas and opinions. I am in awe of how she balances everything successfully and with ease. I, that's the end of the letter. I suspect that you balance everything with what looks like ease. I suspect your, your mom and dad and the people who know you best and love you most would say, it's not always with ease, but you have the grace to make it look as though it is with ease. And so, Annie, I. I'm thankful for the words of your guidance counselor, but. As I was thinking about presenting this to you, I was thinking that the, the list of amazing things about you, were we to, to care to present that tonight and embarrass you further. Would be too long to recite, and I don't have the time or the creativity to really put into words what makes you you. I've tried though to distill what I would think of as my list, as I think about you, into a few things that really matter to me as the superintendent, as an educator, as a leader in this community. As a parent and as a servant to, to, to everybody here, the things that to me really set you apart. Annie, you have empathy and the hugeness of heart to make that empathy useful. You have brilliance and a work ethic to make that brilliance actionable. And you have dedication and the boundless energy to make that dedication actually matter for the people around you and for the world around you. And that's a pretty powerful list of things to have and to be. So on behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, on behalf of our school communities, on behalf of our district community. On behalf of the school committee and everybody that's, that's sharing this screen with us here tonight on this Zoom. Thank you, Annie. Thank you so much for being you. Thank you so much for, for, for being a student here in Mount Greylock. Jamie and Childsy, thank you so much for trusting the, the, the last or the youngest of your treasures to the district. And thank you for being a young person, Annie, that we are all so proud of. And so, so grateful to know. And so it's my honor, if you are here, we would shake hands and I would hand this over to you. And I will catch you over at school and we'll get this to you before the holidays. So Annie, congratulations and thank.
Thank you, Dr. McCandless, for your kind words and this great honor. I'd like to thank all my teachers and family and friends who have always supported me. And I'm just so thankful to have grown up in the outstanding schools of the Mount Greylock School District.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you, and congratulations to you. Congratulations to your family. We thank you all so much for, for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Annie. Congratulations.
And Andy, Annie, you are under no obligation to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
That's not what I was gonna say, Jake.
Congratulations, Annie. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on from my favorite school committee topic ever. Approval of minutes. Someone like to make a motion to move the, no, to approve the November tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
So moved.
Julia moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Carrie seconds. Any discussion? Curtis.
Hi, on page three, I think. Where it says that I will place Carrie Green as chair of the policy committee, I replaced her on the committee but not as the chair of the committee.
That is correct. And it is correct in the attachment in our packet, but we'll make that correction in the minutes.
Curtis, were you volunteering? I'm sorry.
No, 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 Jose. I saw the sheet. It's you, my guy. Good try.
Christina, what do you mean it's correct in the attachment? Oh, you mean the. Attachment about the subcommittee, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry. Um, one. Before we move on from this. I just really appreciate our minutes taker, especially when we have those long meetings. One, I also love that there are ti, that she puts the timestamps on everything. So. When we're having a discussion, if we want to go back and get the detail, we can. One thing I noticed with the recordings, and I don't know if you've probably all noticed this too, but. The video only captures the person who is speaking. So if somebody leaves a meeting that's on a school committee, that's not necessarily. Noticed by the note taker, so it. It probably is on me to record when a person leaves and get that to the note taker. If you leave a meeting and join a meeting, it would be really nice if it's, when it's appropriate for you to say. up, when it's appropriate for you to say Christina Conry is back, I returned at six oh six P M. Um, just so the the note taker has that. And then, you know, who whoever is running the meeting at that time can write it down too. That way, we we can capture the comings and goings in a, in a, in a better way until we get to the point where we're meeting in person and then it's really obvious when somebody walks in a room. Or out of a room. Coming in March. Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elton, by an I.
Green, I.
I think we lost Steve. That motion passes. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two joint meeting with field and track minutes?
So moved.
Julia moves.
I'll second.
Carrie seconds. Any discussion on those minutes?
I think I had a question or comment. Okay. Just have to find it. And it actually may have been on a different document. Yeah, I think it was on a different document. Um, but I did wanna mention that um, we should put this in the packet for the Track and Field Project Committee because we haven't approved the joint meeting minutes in that committee. So maybe we could use these um, for approval there as well.
Any other comments, discussion? Hey, hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elton, by an I.
Green, I.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have principal updates. And today we are going to hear from Nolan Pratt, the Lanesboro Elementary School Principal on school couns- council budget input.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Friday Eve, if you will. Um, do I have permission to share this screen? Do I need to share this? I can tell you the whole process. I have a presentation. Um, if you wanna see it.
You can share if you wish to share, Nolan.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thumbs up if you can see the screen. Says Lanesboro Elementary School, School Council Budget Requests. All right. So the school council um, is amazing. They put in a ton of hours this fall. We started in September. I asked, you know, it's time to start thinking about the next school year, which always takes them aback. Um, I said, what do you wanna see? What do you wanna know? What information will guide you best in making these budget requests? And they asked for data, um, MCAS, attendance, mental health, uh, behavior incidents, and curriculum. We spent October, November, and just this last Tuesday talking about what we saw, what we wanted. I mean, narrowed it down to three prior priority areas. Um, supporting student interactions in unstructured times.
Sorry to interrupt. Uh, Steve Miller rejoining the meeting, left at six eighteen because of a bad net connection.
Welcome back, Steve.
Thanks.
Um, so the three priority areas are supporting student interactions and unstructured time, addressing students with disabilities, the math achievement gap that I pointed out, and updating classroom technology. So the first priority area is supporting students in interact- uh, interactions in unstructured times. And that is, um, a way we can solve that is hiring one point five um, paraprofessionals. Last year, we, you know, we've reduced by four paraprofessionals. It was a huge leap of faith. Um, and students, you know, the impact of COVID, as I talked about at the last, last month's meeting with MCAS, the biggest impact is their social development. They're still relearning or learning for their first time how to interact with their peers. Um, so having the extra pair of support at recess, lunch specials, in the classroom, all over the place, it's gonna allow those students' student interactions to be supervised in a way that they can have a special impact to those students to learn how to interact with one another as they move over, uh, as they learn to, you know, be with another. Um, it also allows carryover consistency with the expectations of classroom teachers in recess, specials, whenever the classroom teacher isn't there. The second gap I talked about was the math achievement gap. I I know you can see a probably a very small picture on your screen. That's actually a screenshot from last month I taught at MCAS. Again, the blue dots are where we're focusing in. Um, and you can see that our students with disabilities and our students that are high needs and our students that received title one support are not achieving like their peers, and we want to address this. So um, to talk about what tier two and tier three math curriculum looks like, first you have to understand what tier one is. Tier one is whole classroom instruction. That's what all the students get when they are in the class with their homeroom teacher. Tier two is an interventionist. If a student needs some support, they go to an interventionist to get that support, to get them able to access or fill gaps. Tier three is special education, IEP students. Um, and sometimes potentially five oh four students, depending on the five oh four. So we, we are looking to get a curriculum that helps close those gaps. A math, a tier two, tier three math curriculum for our special education and interventionists help fill those gaps. We currently in ELA, we do have Wilson and Foundations, which helps close those gaps. Uh, we have nothing in math right now. So um, this is an important thing to think about because if you're in, you know, grade three, four, and five, and you're starting to learn about perimeter, and you have to add up the sides, it's gonna be harder for you to access that curriculum if you're still working on how to add. And then lastly, um, math anxiety exists. And having the support to help those students with math anxiety, make math a little bit easier to exist, ex- assess without, access without being worried about whether or not you're getting the answer wrong or right um, is gonna lead to greater student achievement. And then the last updating student uh, classroom technology, short throw projectors. This has been a request on the school council for three years now and it continues to be a priority. Uh, the interactive short throw projectors allow educators to deliver highly engaging lessons. The short throw projectors create more interactive lessons. I don't know if you've seen these short throw projectors. They are amazing. They have a crystal clear picture. It's large. Every student can see it. Um, and one last thing, and this might just be a me thing, but it gets that, you know, the prime real estate in front of the classroom is a projector cart instead of a student. And I think that's um, it's a small place where we can have an imp- great impact on a student. Those are the three requests from the school council. Again, big shout out to the school council. And what questions do you have for me? Carrie.
Thanks, Nolan. Um, thank you for this. Helpful to know as we're moving into budget season, right? Um, there are a couple of things in your list of requests that don't seem to address some of the things that the school council wanted to look at, such as behavior issues and um, mental health, wellness, that kind of thing. Um, was that just the paras that you were talking about the need for? Um,
So I think I can clarify this. Um, that list at the beginning, I can show my screen. That was the data that they wanted to look at. That's what they requested to go through and see. So they asked to say, look at MCAS, they looked at attendance, they looked at all of that. And from that list, they picked three priority areas. And the one that sticks out is the 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 behavior incidents. It's that, uh, it's such a weird phrase. It's the interactions with peers. Like they're, you know, people are getting in arguments. They're not learning how to share, like, the relearning how to share. And that's where the para support will come in throughout the school day.
So then just to clarify on that, Lanesboro Elementary reduced by four paras last year? And you're asking for reinstatement of one point five of the four that were reduced?
Yes.
Hmm, okay.
All right, seeing no further questions. Thank you all for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Nolan.
Thanks, Nolan.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the superintendent report. So I turn it over to Jake McCandless.
Thank you, Christina. I'm just getting squared away to do a share screen myself. And I don't think this should take the half hour that I asked we we have for it. But one never knows. You can see that. Okay, um, there there's a couple. I I am going to uh, as I'm presenting this plan and as we presented it in twenty twenty-one, it is a plan that encompasses the the year that we're currently in. So there's, there's maybe a tweak or two, but also using this as an opportunity to update you on where we are with the multi-year plan. And um, also, there's, there's one slide where I'm gonna say what would be my, if if I were magically made the Commissioner of Education, um, the for one day, what would be among my high priority items I would wanna take a look at that I will get into through the context of looking at our own data a little bit. So um, you know, this, this plan, really, I would encourage you to take a look at this online. You have a a link to the live Google Doc version and then you also have a PDF. And after we've cleaned it up a bit, we will um, we will get it reposted. Um, you know, it has a lot of introductory material that is really not that changed from last year. But I would encourage folks uh, on page three, all of the data that's used on this plan and mostly is just a way of of acquainting ourselves a little deeper with the district that we know on certain levels, but 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 could know better on other levels. Um, all of the data that I will be talking about tonight is is available on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website. And I would really encourage folks to go in and take a look at our profile uh, on the profiles page. And um, and then later on in the presentation, there's a link to a couple of statewide reports. There's, there's about fifty-five statewide reports that are available that are, that are just really informative about the state of the state. Um, and that I find interesting, that I find troubling in in some regards and and that I find uh, usually very helpful to look at. How are we doing compared to the, to the other several hundred school districts in the Commonwealth? And then if you wanna take a look at a, at an interesting new tool that's out there, um, thanks to our colleagues at the Berkshire Educational Resources K twelve group. Um, this uh, their website, berktwelve.org uh, has a dashboard that allows for for a real good look at um, uh, certain sets of metrics for all of the Berkshire County uh, public schools. So just getting into our own data a little bit by way of setting up a discussion of the plan. Um, you've seen our enrollments here. I think we took a look at that uh, last month in more depth. You know, we're, we're about as big as we've been in uh, in several years here with twelve hundred and six students. And each of the schools is at sort of a, not an all-time high, certainly. But with the exception of Mount Greylock, uh, both of our elementary schools are are substantially higher than they have been for many, many years. And so um, you know, we're looking at the the opportunities that that are available to us by the fact that our enrollments are are thus far continuing to grow. Uh, when we get in and take a look at who our students actually are, um, you know, you, you, and and this is where I think it's helpful to go in and take a look at our profile and do some year-by-year comparisons. Um, nearly two percent of our students in the district are students whose whose first language is not English. Um, one and a half percent of those students are multilingual learned. So they are learning um, in in their own language that that may be their primary language and also learning an awful lot of subject matter uh, in English as well. Um, this year, almost fourteen percent of our students are students with disability. Uh, over thirty-four percent are students who would be uh, identified by the state as high needs, which means they are, they are um, any one of of a set of categories or maybe overlapping categories of first language, not English. Uh, do have some sort of a of a learning need or another disability uh, or are considered low income for the state. And almost twenty-four percent of our students, um, this is actually going back to last year are are low-income students. And then you can see how that breaks down. We're still waiting for the states to get us final, final uh, view of what we're looking like in real time this year. Now that they've had our data for about a month. Um, this is a really, when we look at at the racial makeup of our students, um, this is one where I just went ahead and do the comparison. Cause I think in the context of, of who we are and who we're trying to become as a staff and as a community of learners, it's, it's really important to realize that um, we are getting more diverse racially uh, by the year. I would make the case we're getting more diverse in in other ways of of examining diversity too. But um, you know, just giving you, as as you walk through this, the blue is this year's percentage of um, of of who our students are uh, in terms of their racial identity. And then in the green bars are going back to uh, to the eighteen, nineteen school year. Just so you can see the growth um, in in really uh, most of these categories just over a a three or four-year period. And uh, and again, drives the need to be focusing on to to our administrative team and I think to our, to our educators in the community uh, and to our families. It it drives the need for us to become more and more competent at at working with students that do not necessarily um, share our experiences, our identities, and um, and and our, you know, our, our way of being and showing up and and operating in the world. So encourage you to spend some time with that and I put in this year, wanted to take a look at, um, we, we look at the, the, how our students identify racially. Also wanted to take a look in the the most recent data we have that's been okayed by the state is is last school year. Also wanted to look at our, our staff race at Mount Greylock Regional School District. Um, we, we certainly would ultimately strive to be a district where uh, the diversity among the adults and the grownups doing the work in our buildings is um, at least mirroring the the rich diversity across our student bodies in each of our three schools. And so you can see, look, these are, these are not percentages. These are numbers uh, of the, of the number of people, and these are self-identifications by our staff through our uh, reporting system. And um, but I'd encourage you to take a look at that. You can see how this breaks down across the state. And this is where I'm gonna maybe get a little bit on a, on a soapbox um, and and talk about what, one thing I would be focusing on if if I were um, the commissioner and I, and I'm think I'm pleased to say as an admirer of our commissioner that he is hyper-focused on this, as he should be. Um, so these are our numbers, where my cursor is wiggling around. Um, if you go through on the publicly available data, which is linked on this presentation, if you go through teacher race on a district-by-district basis, and this includes both traditional um, public school districts and um, public charter school districts, there are one hundred and twelve public school districts in the Commonwealth that do not have a single black or African-American full-time equivalent teacher. That's zero. There are, if you go into the report and dig in a little bit, you will see that some districts have a point two or a point six. Um, I'm looking just at one point oh full-time equivalents. A hundred and twelve public school districts in the Commonwealth. I think inclusive of charters, there's around four I think inclusive of charters, there's around four hundred and fifty public school districts have zero black or African-American teachers. One hundred and thirty-two public school districts have zero Asian teachers. And eighty-five public school districts have zero Hispanic teachers. And I'm using the language that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses. Now, when you, when you think about that context of having a, a school where there is, there, where there is little to literally no racial diversity among the, the, the teachers, consider that right now in Massachusetts, among, you know, our nine hundred and eighty-so-thousand public school students, nine point four percent of those students across the Commonwealth identify as black or African-American. Seven point three percent of those public school students identify as Asian, pushing twenty-five percent of those students identify as Hispanic. And so you, you can really see, you can see the disconnect on a, on a micro level, looking at our school district, looking at many school districts in the Berkshires. You can see it on a macro level, looking across the entire Commonwealth, where our student percentages are in terms of racial makeup versus where our professional staff percentages are. I think what's most alarming to me on this page, that's kind of full of things that could and should be taking us aback, is this bottom piece, education preparation in Massachusetts. Now, I'm very, very anxious to see the last set of data that's reported on this by the state is from nineteen twenty. So I don't have a handle on what twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two looks like. And so maybe these, maybe these data are, maybe there's, there's like a cloudiness over this data because of COVID. But it's really alarming when you look at the general number of people preparing to be teachers in teacher preparation programs across the Commonwealth. And it's hyper-alarming when you look at individuals of color or people who would represent diversity in our schools and help us mirror our student bodies. In nineteen, in the nineteen twenty school year, only two hundred and seventy-five individuals identified as black or African-American in teacher preparation programs across the entire Commonwealth. If you go back just a few years, five years previous to that, there were nearly five hundred black or African-American individuals who were preparing to be teachers. You can see that play out among Asian students that are preparing to be teachers, Hispanic teachers, the Hispanic future teachers, and you can see it play out in white future teachers. In twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, there were over thirteen thousand people in teacher preparation programs. In nineteen twenty, there were fewer than five thousand five hundred people preparing to be teachers. If you're somebody that's aware of the demographics of our current teaching staff, you will know that, that every district is sitting on a decent-sized percentage of their population of teachers that are probably within a five-to-eight-year window of being ready to retire and move on to what's next. The numbers for Native American individuals, shocking in twenty fourteen, fifteen, even more shocking in nineteen and twenty. Same would be true of, of native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander future teachers and those who identify as multi-race, non-Hispanic. Carrie?
Jake, I'm just wondering if it's possible that, given the demand for teachers, especially post-pandemic and with all the retirements, teacher or people are skipping what is considered traditionally education preparation and going right into teaching? I'm, I'm not sure what is defined as being enrolled in education preparation in the state.
Yeah, and we can dig in a little bit on that, although I will say, so I think a couple of things, and I'm grateful for the question. The proliferation of individuals being granted emergency licenses since the, the twenty school year is, I, I would venture to say nearly every single district in the Commonwealth has at a minimum a couple of people who are operating on an emergency license. There, there are some pathways into licensure that do not include sitting for a formal quote-unquote teacher preparation program, but I, but I would say that in, in Massachusetts, that's, that's harder than in many other states, and I don't think that nearly accounts for these numbers. I, I think as the, and maybe it's out there somewhere, I just don't know where it is. I, I think if we could get a handle on like the, the twenty-one, twenty-two, and even real-time twenty-two, twenty-three numbers, it, it would help answer that question in a more complete way. And I'm very interested to see how this notion of emergency licensures running out, which ultimately I suspect anything with an emergency label does not strike me as something that will last for good. It, it was to respond to a crisis. So we, we will see where that ends. And hypothetically, there's always been a space for people to enter the profession, be doing the work on a daily basis, be, be paid as a professional, but also be doing the work of achieving licensure. I, I believe that those kind of folks are reflected in these data that if, that if you are taking coursework toward that, toward the end of licensure. So it, it will be really interesting to see how, how the department responds to, i- is this about easing up on licensure requirements? Is this about maybe not easing up necessarily, but about being more expansive in their thinking of licensure requirements? Or what, what quote-unquote teacher preparation looks like? I just know it's very worrisome. And I, and I, and I would say particularly, you know, going back to these, to, to, to the, the reporting categories that are reflective of individuals that, that would, that would help us to mirror the racial diversity of our students in our buildings, that, that it's, it's really alarming that, because we, we know, and you can look at trends, the number of students that identify as black or African-American or Asian or Hispanic or Native American or native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, or it's multi-race, non-Hispanic. That proportion of our student bodies is getting bigger, and I think you would be, I'd be nonsensical to say that that proportion's not going to continue to get bigger. The, the fact that the people that are preparing to be in classrooms, helping those students and all students prepare for their future is not expanding as well is really concerning. And I, and I do applaud the state for the, the amount of resources they're, they're putting into this, but I also know it's not. We, we were, we were playing catch-up from the very beginning of this, of this contest. And, and it feels like we're, we're not, not making strides or not on the, on the, we're not on the edge of making the kind of gains that we need to make to best serve our students. So this, this isn't particularly my bailiwick as your superintendent, and it's not, it's certainly not the, certainly not the realm of our district improvement plan to address this, but I thought it would be of interest. And I think it's something that more folks across the Commonwealth need to be talking about. So moving back to a more local context, looking at our attendance for the, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So you know, reading across on this, our attendance rate was ninety-four point one as a district. And, and essentially what that means for folks maybe watching this at home or who will watch it on Willie Net, on any given day last year, ninety-four point one percent of our students were in school. That's, that's what that attendance rate metric means. The average number of absences across all of our students, take our entire student body and do the math around how many days on average our students missed last year. Our students missed ten point three days of school per child last year. That is, again, if you go into the state-level data, there's a link right on the page. That's, that's higher than it has been traditionally in this district. It's, I can't remember if it's dramatically higher. I don't think it's dramatically higher. I would think we would be closer to probably more in the seven to eight range for average absences across the entire student body. I think a piece of this we can attribute to, you know, again, we were asking students who were COVID-positive or COVID-exposed to please stay home and asking families and guardians and caregivers, please keep them home. When we get over to the absent ten or more days column, these, we're talking about actual students here. This is not a percentage. So if you're, you know, these, these were, these were, I believe these were students that, that individual students that missed over ten days. I'm not quite sure how that jives with the average number of absences, except to say that, that there's this, if you move over to the next column, this fifteen point nine percent of our students who are chronically absentee tend to miss a, a much larger number of days than this average number of attendances or of absences. And when we're talking about chronically absent, we're talking about students that have missed eighteen days or more, ten percent of a one hundred eighty-day school year. And then when we look at unexcused, these are students who weren't called in, weren't on college visits, weren't sick, didn't have a doctor's note, parent didn't. Two point seven percent of our students were just out more than nine days without really any explanation. Then you can see how this breaks down based on various demographics that are represented in our school. Julia?
Thank you. So I'm, I, this is really good data. I'm interested, and, and we'll go back and look at how it compares to the previous years, but the disproportionality feels really significant, especially when we look at something like chronically absent students, where all students were at fifteen point nine percent, but high needs were at thirty-one point four, almost twice as much. And I'm wondering if there's any commentary behind that or what, you know, efforts or systems or policies, or how can we support getting kids to school, especially the high-needs students who probably need to?
Yeah, I, I think that has been the conversation among our administrative team is, you know, A, I don't think we're, we're, we're certainly not unique in that. I would, I would say anybody that is unique in that is the, is the unicorn that, 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 that really goes against a, a statewide trend. But I, I think there's several categories that we would need to say, what is this really about? Our low-income students are almost, you know, double the percentage of students in general. Same with high needs. Students with disabilities are pushing thirty percent. Our, our African-American or black identifying students are pushing thirty, or Hispanic or Latino students are pushing thirty. And, and some of it we have a handle on, and some of it we don't have a handle on. I, I, I think a piece of it shows up in the district improvement plan around mental health supports and about trying to create a situation in every classroom where a student has an adult in the room who is actively and purposefully building a relationship with them and, and, and communicating with that child's family. But I don't have the answer, Julia, and I'm not even sure, you know, we, we do what everybody does. We send letters home, phone calls get made. In extreme cases, we will file a child requiring assistance type of thing. But it's, it's problematic. It's problematic, particularly among the subgroups. Particularly among the subgroups. And as usual, I have lots more questions than I have answers, sorry to say. Taking a look at our, at our student discipline, and when we're, when we're talking about student discipline, we're, we're really talking about, you know, we're not talking about a conversation, we're not talking about a restorative type of thing or something where there's a mediation. We're talking about where you are either an in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. And, and our numbers are low, but again, there is a, there is a, not enough the rise to the level of the state labeling us as disproportionate. But you can see that our students with disabilities are, you know, approaching-ish double that of, of just the standalone student body. Our high-needs students, again, are much higher. Male students, double the rate of female students, which again, none of that is, is too surprising. Where there's shadowed out, it's the, the state did not, that you have to have a certain number of, of students and incidents in order for the state to report back to us. I would say with, with our students with disabilities, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be so detailed that I'm, that I'm in any danger at all of, of identifying, you know, an individual student. But you, we have, we have students that this year, this, this twenty-two, twenty-three school year are in much more appropriate settings for what their level of need is than, than, you know, a, a general education school in, in, in the, 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 what we can accommodate in the ways that we have space program and individuals to support students. So I would suspect, and we can discuss this this time next year, I would suspect that percentage will go down because when we, when we dig into that data and look at the who behind the number, there, there's some of that was, that was addressed through simply a more appropriate placements via the IEP process. So just wanted you to have a look at that. Also wanted to take just a couple of minutes to look at advanced placement performance. And I, I, you know, as a parent of three kids that took an awful lot of AP courses and did really well in some of them and did not so well in some of them. You know, I've, I've seen the power of AP courses to, to help students be able to take more things that they want to take when they hit college or university, rather than, than spending quite as much time doing things that they have to take, particularly in introductory courses. I'm, I'm a fan of advanced placement. I think there are other things that are equal to or greater than. What I, what I like about advanced placement, as somebody that's interested in student data, is that it is, it is a good way to compare our students to students across the country on that given day and that given course, and that given day being the day that the AP test is taken. I would, I would urge you to, again, go in and take a look at this data and do some multi-year comparisons. We have some areas where we're, we're up compared to years past. We have some areas where we're down. Our overall percentage of students that are scoring what's known as a qualifying score, which is a, a score of three, four, or five on the AP test in general, seventy point four percent of our students last year scored a, a three, a four, or a five. And there's some courses that we don't offer. There's some courses that we had students in, but nobody took the test. We, we are having conversations about, you know, in order to have AP show up on your transcript, do you need to sit for the test? If we are essentially requiring the test as a part of the course, should we be paying for the test? So there's, there's lots of conversation going on about how to approach AP. But I, I think the more, I think the more important conversation is about, okay, if we agree that AP is a positive thing, if we agree that AP can be a powerful thing in the life of students. And I think there's good data going back years to suggest that just taking an AP course. Uh, and I think there's good data going back years to suggest that just taking an AP course. Uh, as a high school student, regardless of how you do on the test. Actually, students who sit for an AP course do have better successful post-high school outcomes. In terms of getting through college or university program in a reasonable number of years. Um, this is an area where, where this, this graph that I'm uh cursoring on right now. Shows our percentages of qualifying scores. Um, again, you will see this yellow is where we are this year. You can see where we were in years gone past. So we were better than the past several years, equal to the seventeen, eighteen school year. Some really high years going back about a decade, seventy-eight percent. Uh, you know, seventy-six percent, pushing seventy-five percent. I think the piece that, that I am really maybe most interested in. Or, or really interested in is uh. I like to see an expansion in the number of test takers. Because that means that AP is becoming less of a self-selected club. And more of an opportunity that is open to all students. And I think Mount Greylock Regional School has been making strides on that. Um, for some time actually, and that's a real credit to the, to the staff and administration now. And the staff and administration going back in time. That um, the numbers of students, and I think we could even say the types of students. That are taking AP has increased and not seen a dramatic decline in, in quality of that experience. As is evidenced by the, the past outcome. So the second chart on this page really, you know, takes a look at. Um, and I just use high needs. Remember, high needs again is, is encompassing um, a multilingual learner. A student that is um labeled by the state as low income or a student that is labeled by the state as being a student with disability. That number, it's, it's a good thing for our district. It's a good thing for our school. It's a good thing for kids. To see these numbers increasing as we go through the years. And you can see that there is um, there is a, a slight um decrease from sort of the historical highs. There's eighty-five percent qualifying score rate or passing rate going back to fifteen, sixteen. When there were um eight test takers. This past year, there were twenty students who, who fit one of the labels or who are under the umbrella of one of the labels. That the state uh identifies as high needs. And we're approaching sixty percent of, of them uh actually achieved qualifying scores compared to the state, which is uh. Approaching forty-five percent of those same students. So again, the question that we have to ask ourselves, there's a couple of different questions on this pathway. One is. How do we make, how do we make AP more accessible from a bureaucratic perspective and an organizational perspective? How do we get more students to be willing to risk take? To step out of a world that they're maybe more comfortable in, maybe more accustomed to and give an AP course a try. And then how do we support all of our students, including and maybe especially supporting those students for whom this is not a given? Um, in, inside their own heads and hearts or even inside their own home, but that it's maybe a stretch and a risk. How do we support them to make sure that risk was, was worth taking? Um, so that, that remains work that, that we continue to do. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on SAT, but I do think is where we're all in the back of our minds wondering. Um, what did COVID do? What did, what, the way we had to do school for a couple of years do um to our kids? Uh, I, I thought, you know, AP can serve as a good stand-in for that. Some of the discipline data can serve as a good stand-in for that or to help us better understand what COVID actually meant. We talked about MCAS and um NAEP uh in the last month or two. Did think it was worthwhile to, to put up some uh, some, some SAT data. Uh, and I, I have a couple of observations. One, it's really interesting to me in this nineteen, twenty. And in twenty twenty-one, you can see how low the number of test takers was. That coincides very squarely with COVID. It also coincides with most colleges opting to go SAT optional. And um, I, I don't. Uh, I'm not really as sure as I was then of the state of the state around what schools have gone back the requiring SATs. But I don't think we're back to the number that we started with um pre-COVID. However, our number, our number of test takers here is, is approaching um pre-COVID numbers. Uh. You can see um reading scores. This past year represented um pretty close to like a ten-year high, I think in sixteen, seventeen. The, the uh average reading score was six twenty, the reading and, and writing uh score. Now that those are back together uh with six nineteen, so you, you could make the case that um. We maybe had a little bit of a, of a law, a, a COVID-driven law, but over the last two school years. That has been um made up. You can see that um scores this year in mathematics, a five ninety-seven. That is the, um, I believe, the second highest average score across um all test takers from Mount Greylock. Uh, over a ten-year period, sixteen, seventeen, again, um with an average score of six oh four. And then you can see what the state's average scores were here. So um, again, a year or two does not a pattern make. But it, it certainly gives us something to look at for next year to see maybe what some of the longer-term effects of COVID are. On student performance when we're, when we're looking at our students. Um, normed against a standardized test or in the case of AP against. Tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of others. Um, again, just like we did with AP, just taking a quick look at um, at high need students. Uh, uh, again, what we wanna see is the number of test takers going up. Um, although the, the, the notion of test optional may or may not impact that. But, but also, you know, we wanna see the number of students putting themselves out there to take this test going up. Uh, and, and us supporting them in taking that risk if they perceive it as a risk. And we also wanna see their, their scores going up and more closely approaching the, just the average of all students. Uh, and you can see last year um for the reading and writing portion of the SAT. Um, really the, the highest scores that we've seen in a ten-year period. And for the mathematics, the same is true. And I, and I think the mathematics in some ways is even a little more dramatic. So uh, you know, we, we do want to continue to focus on. Our perception that every student, regardless of their label. Is labeled in our heads and in our hearts as a, an achiever and as a potential achiever. And that, that belief on the part of the grownups who are here to do the work and to serve. Starts to translate into the heads and hearts of those students themselves that they see themselves as, as a person of uh capable of high achievement. And again, it's, it's about, you know, us removing bureaucratic structures to achievement. It's about us uh encouraging risk-taking and finding ways to make that as safe as possible. And uh, and then finding ways to support students as they put themselves out there. Um, and then we get into the actual plan. You will notice this looks a lot like last year's plan. Because it is last year's plan. As you're looking through this, um, any updates and or additions are. Um. In bold italics. And so you'll see those as you go through this. And so, you know, updating on. Updating on our, on our community goal. How do we eliminate incidents of hate, mistrust, and bullying? Build a greater sense of belonging? How do we build a greater sense of empathy? And being a responsible, respectful neighbor? How do we create introspective, ref- reflective practitioners? The grownups who are, who are on self-guard against um bias? And how do we become a more anti-racist community? We have continued our, our three-year commitment to working with Dr. Joshi and her Teaching for Equity and Justice course. Um, just over two-thirds of our faculty and uh, and, and several of our staff have gone through. Uh, the, the actual three-day intensive course. We are working to figure out how to get the last third who thus far have not done this voluntarily. Or have not been able to do it voluntarily, uh, how to get those, that third of our, of our teaching staff through. Um, we've also, you know, we've, we've also done workshop work and individual work with Dr. Joshi. Um, we certainly had a wonderful time with Dr. Singh uh here earlier this year, just about a month ago, a month and a half ago. Um, we do continue the iterative self-building process of curriculum review. We, we do that internally. We do it externally when people, you know, reach out and say, what is this? Help me understand this. Um, and, and we do take feedback from our students, from the families that we're here to serve and from the professional. Uh, collegial group of, of those of us that are here to do the work. Um, we continue to work with uh the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. In our efforts to create a more diverse staff. Uh, you know, we, we are really committed to that. There are, there are some, there are lots of challenges. And we talked about some of the challenges just in terms of, of uh. The number of young people that are choosing to go into this line of work, but uh challenges or not. It's something that we have to, we have to keep as a very high priority. Um, and so we continue to refine our recruiting practices, our advertising practices. And we're very pleased to let you know that we are now um members of the Berkshire Black Economic Council. Uh, so we are in um regular communication with them. We are on their outreach list. We uh advertise um all of our open positions through them. And I'd like to thank uh Joe and Jonathan Knopper for, for uh making that opportunity happen. And uh, and so we, we continue this work. Uh, the policy subcommittee has a hand in some of this work. Um, there are community groups that are, that are helpful in helping us reflect and identify some of this work. Um, we, we do continue to post. I think we're likely to be moving forward with interviews in January for our DEIB director position. Um, I think we're finally there. And so we, we continue to uh, to, to make um. Make these, these goals priorities. Jose, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Jake, and thank you as always for this uh wonderful, wonderfully thoughtful presentation. Um. One question I have is regarding the professional development. You know, there's a reporting of uh. A recent incident at Williamstown Elementary with a substitute teacher. And so what I'm curious about is, is. Whether within the, in terms of the staff that are, that are being included in this professional development, whether and how um. Our substitute teachers are, are included in this as well.
Yeah, that's a great question, much better than the answer you're gonna get, which is um, uh. I, I don't think if a substitute asks to be a part of this, we would say no. But we have not prioritized reaching out to our, to our core of substitutes to do this either. Um, and, and I think, Jose, that would. You know, as, as we're being reflective, I think I would say that our, our athletic coaches. I think would probably benefit from some of this work, our cafeteria staff, our custodians. So I, I think reaching beyond classroom teachers and paraprofessionals is um. Is uh, is, is, is a, is work that, that still remains in front of us.
Okay. Do, do you, is that, are there budget constraints to being able to expand? Uh, or, or be more inclusive of, 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 of. Of the folks that work within the district to be a part of this, this kind of training?
Yeah, I, I, I. There's budget constraints to everything. And I think in the upcoming year, we're, we're likely to see more budget restraints. Than we've seen in years past because of the state of the economy. Um, so yes, and that will be conversations still to come as we proceed through the budget. And I do, Joel was good enough to text me. Um, we did invite all of our substitute teachers to the three-day workshop this year. And we actually had three substitute teachers that, that went through the full three-day uh course. So thank you for a great question and thank you, Joel, for uh, for, for helping me out. Um, the next building block was, was to build and implement a real and working system of restorative practices throughout the school district. Um, so that we can move beyond sort of uh crime and punishment. Uh. Some interesting developments there. You know, it's been interesting to see how much of that exists organically. And there's a good bit of it. I don't know that it would fit in, in restorative practices. Um, in quotes or with capital letters, but it certainly strikes me as relational and restorative. Um, but, but we have not made much headway in, in creating really a formalized, reportable. Eight through twelve system. Um, there have been some recent changes to mass general law. That prior to, to any student being suspended, uh inclusive of in-school suspension. For, for most things, uh, the district must document that there's been some effort. At a relationship-based behavioral change or a restorative-based um behavioral change. Before, before a district leaps right into suspension. I, I can say by observation in this district, um, suspension is the. A suspension of any kind, be it in school or out of school, is the absolute last tool in the toolkit. That gets reached for in this district. And um, you know, what, what is less clear to me? And I think driving our conversations is, that's good, that's good. There are instances where it's not even a question that a, that a suspension and a break from a student being present. Is what's required. That's good for everybody sometimes, including that student. Um, what's less clear to me is, is how systematic, how um. How consistent across classrooms and then up and down grade levels with, within those classrooms, our practices are. So, so more work needs to be done there. Again, I think it's a good thing. I think it's um good news for us. That we live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that we raise kids and educate kids here. Because, you know, the folks that are, that are making the laws and the regulations that govern us um see that as well. And while that's largely meant to address um racial disparities, quite frankly. Uh, and the differences between the number of students of color that are suspended and white students that are suspended. Um, I think going back to Julia's question, when we just took a quick look at some of our discipline data. It, it certainly holds true for, for lots of categories of students. And so that's, that's work that we continue. The uh, the third building block, the building of better district was wellness. How do we help our students be happier, healthier, more productive? Uh, have a more, a, a, a more satisfying emotional life and a life of the mind? How do we help students balance what they need to do, what they want to do, and still have time just to uh have to play? And Jose, did you have your hand raised again or?
Apologies, Jake. I, I didn't want to interrupt, so I was happy to.
No, 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 go ahead, please.
No, no, this is, um, this is something that, you know, we've talked about uh, uh, in, uh, earlier, I should say. Um, but it's something that I wanted to, to air here, that some of the feedback that we've gotten from. Um, our community regarding, and I'm not sure if this, which of the two goals this might fit in with. But, but it's, it's regarding the bias-based incident reporting form. And some of the feedback that we've received is that the uh structure of the form could be a deterrent to bias-based reporting. Um, and I don't know if you wanna speak to, to that now or, or just uh, I, I, it's important for me to ask that. And I don't know if you want to speak to, to that now, or just, I, I, it's important for me to ask that question here so that folks know that we're, we're talking about this.
Yeah, I'm, thank you for, for bringing that up. And we, we continue to work on, on our form and all of our sort of reporting platforms and how, how user-friendly they actually are. There, there is a, you know, the, the one piece, and we're not there, but, you know, a, a, a bright spot in that maybe storm, more stormy cloud is that that there, there are some reporting mechanisms in the community that ultimately do get to us, that have been helpful. And, and I think, you know, our principals, myself, other district-level officials, Joe and Joel and Ellie and Jonathan, I, I think we have established, some of those folks have deep, long, wide, far-reaching relationships in the community. But I, I think we're, we're approaching a more, a healthier comfort level with people just picking up the phone and calling the superintendent because they're not seeing the superintendent as the superintendent. They're seeing it as, here's a person that cares, that I, that I know a little bit and that I trust with this. So some work to do on the structure that is actually serving the purpose for which the structure should be existing, which is to help students and help families. I think we're making better strides on community outreach and having, just building a, a greater comfort all around with knowing that a reach out is not going to be met with defensiveness or an immediate reaction that says, hmm, are you sure this is real? In fact, quite the opposite is true. Thank you for asking that.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, and an update on sort of our, our wellness writ large goal as we work to build, you know, a community that is really clicking on all cylinders for all kids and all families. You know, some, some good things have come of this work. I, I think this, this district improvement goal led directly to, you know, conversations with the Lanesboro, particularly the Lanesboro Elementary School, School Council about, you know, Williamstown has, has the Williamstown Youth Center. Mount Greylock has lots of things going on after school, and we run after-school buses that allow students to participate who might not otherwise be able to participate. And Lanesboro certainly does things after school, but it was really based on, you know, extracurricular. So we, we are pleased to report, as you already know, we do have a, a very low-cost and fair-cost after-school childcare and education program at Williamstown. It is operated and, and, and the kids are served by the same people that are there for them during the day, paraprofessionals and teachers. We have a teacher from Lanesboro that is the, the director of that program. Those kids get to, get to spend, you know, some of them, two, two and a half hours longer in a building that they love and they're happy to be at. And that's a really good thing. That's been a, that's been an equalizer to get, you know, a little bit more parity between our two communities that we serve in that regard. And, and we're, we're very excited about this. And then all of our schools do continue to support out-of-school time athletics through town, town-based youth programs. And that is getting to see from the inside out what a juggling act that is on the part of the facilities folks and Lindy, Lindsey Von Holtz and the principals, working with the people in their community that run those really important after-school activities. It's been really impressive to watch that from, from the inside. The, as you will remember, a key part of this wellness goal was to really examine school start times at the middle and high school because this is the time of year that reminds us that we have young people that are getting on the school bus when it's dark outside and getting home when it's dark outside. We continue, I, I knew that, that I should have been smarter than to include this on the district improvement goals because I know what a massive undertaking it is. I've spent a good bit of time and conversation with others who have actually made this move across the Commonwealth. And I'm not talking about a five-minute adjustment or a seven-minute adjustment or a ten-minute adjustment. We're talking about adjustments that really meet what, what researchers tell us are the needs of the students. The, the most important piece of data that we have in our hands right now, until the family survey actually goes out, was, was conducted by Annie Art and Company from the, the Mount Greylock Regional School Student Council. And, and Molly Sullivan, I think, was really one of the, one of the headliners on this one. The student survey asking about changes of middle school and high school start times, the results that came back from that, and I think I've shared it, but I'm happy to do it again. I should have linked it here. I, I'll tell you that the results were much, much, much more mixed than the students were expecting and much more mixed than I was expecting. In terms of, there was not overwhelming support from the students around moving the start time. And the, the nuances about why that is are the most fascinating part. I will tell you, and those of you that are parents of varsity and junior varsity athletes will, you'll understand this in a way that, that some of us don't understand. The fact that our new athletic alignment, which we are committed to for, I believe, another two years, has us traveling with regularity to the Pioneer Valley, actually has a good, good deal to do with, with student input. And that starting school later would mean athletic contests start later. It could mean that students would be missing not fifteen minutes or a half an hour of their last class of the day, but maybe, maybe the whole period, maybe a whole period and a half. I'll tell you conversations around the county about our athletic alignments. It's really much different to be having this conversation in like Lee or Stockbridge or Lenox, where you're ten minutes from the interstate, than it is to be having this conversation in Sheffield, Massachusetts, or in Williamstown, Massachusetts, where we're, we can almost look out of the windows of our school and see New York State and Vermont, but we cannot see Interstate ninety. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of nuances to this, you know? Just to keep things open, we did do just a three-year bus contract. My, my inclination was to do a five-year bus contract, which we are allowed to do. Joe's greater wisdom around, we wanted to remain as flexible as we could in that contract. And we do, we have had some good conversations with Do Four, as usual, who are a wonderful company to work with, about the fact that if we did make this change mid-contract, there, they would do their best to be flexible. However, our conve, our conversations indicate that their flexibility would be really, really limited by the number of drivers that they're able to put their, to get into their school buses and the number of vehicles they have without passing on a pretty gigantic charge to us. So, so these talks remain very active. We continue. I continue to do workshops to learn more about this. To just, just to stay current with what the, the latest and greatest thinking is. But, and we will be doing a, a, a family survey to get a handle on what the real needs of the families that have to balance work, caretaking of children, caretaking of other family members. In some instances, some people going to school themselves, balancing students that are doing, not to pick on anybody that's in this meeting, but somebody that's balancing youth hockey with cross-country skiing. Good luck with that, Jose and Candace. You know, there's just so many nuances to this, but we continue to be committed to looking at it. And it's, and it's been a really nice opportunity to, to partner and, and with our, with our own student council. Another update around this wellness piece and, and, you know, part of wellness as we, and, and this showed up again in just the data look that we did, the light surfacy data look we did earlier around really wanting to expand opportunities for kids and not just, not just the sort of self-appointed best and brightest. And those students deserve an expansion of opportunities as much as we're capable to. But really, part of expanding opportunities is not so much about creating more opportunities, but getting more people to see that all of the opportunities that we offer are potentially for them. And then supporting them as they step into attempting those opportunities and making it safe to do so. So really, a, 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 an additional activity under, under this piece is to work district-wide to provide a better use of our internal expertise, some, some, some necessary professional development in school and district-wide systems of support that enhance and highlight trauma-informed practices and teaching with the very specific needs and nuances of our students more firmly in mind. You know, that, and that includes kids on 504, students on 504 plans. It includes students that have a host of things going on in the world that may not be identified through an IEP, through a 504 plan. It could just be their past and things that they've lived through. But we really need to get better at differentiating our entire program, but also what happens within classrooms. I'm really grateful to Nolan and his school council and his staff for bringing forward this need for two-tier, tier-two and tier-three mathematics curriculum, which we, we knew was a need. I'm grateful to them for saying it out loud and pushing for it. We need to do that in several areas. You know, we have things that work really well. Our data suggests it works really well for the large group of our students, quote unquote. But when we get down deeper into individual students and the needs and nuances of those individual students, not all of our programming as offered right now works quite as well. And our data says that. In some cases, our data screams that. So we want to do, and are working on a school-by-school inventory of all available resources, including human resources and instructional resources. We, we need to identify individual champions, teacher leaders, paraprof, paraprofessional leaders that are, that are ready, willing, and able to take on further professional development opportunities to build their own capacities so that they can come back and, and be, be even stronger instructional leaders in their buildings and be trainer, you know, train the trainer type model. And then we, we are continuing to work to join local networks, statewide networks, and even in a couple of instances, national networks and opportunities that exist writ very large that serve the ends of becoming a more tra, trauma-sensitive school district and trauma-sensitive classroom. And approaches that, that better recognize the impact of poverty on kids and other life situations that students are going through. Because we need our students to be well in head. We need our students to be well in heart because those are the foundation that being well academically are, are built on. So, you know, as, as we, you will see this take place through, you know, just continuing to dig deeper and deeper and deeper into the data and much individual data. We are looking at who is taking what when they get to middle and high school and, and how can we be more inclusive? How can we get more elementary students, sixth graders, ready to, to dive in at deeper levels in, in seventh and eighth grade? We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow with some folks from Williams College about opening up more Williams courses and, and helping us be a little more expansive in our understanding of how that can work and for whom that can work. And, and, you know, ongoing conversations with MCLA, BCC as well about everything from just full-scale dual enrollment, where you're doing a year of high school on a college campus as you're taking your first year of college, to just, you know, more targeted opportunities to help the students who, you know, Annie was a good example on here, taking multi-variable calculus at Williams. We want our students that, that are competent and confident enough to do that, to have the opportunity. Some of that's about transportation. Some of it's about perception and self-perception. Some of it is about just, just, just further building on a really positive relationship that we have with all three of those academic post-high school organizations. And so we're, we're excited to continue that work and grow that work. And of course, then I'm hitting that again down here, that, that we really need to take a look at some of the logistics of how that would work. You know, we, we are, we're, we're a distance from MCLA. We're a distance from Berkshire Community College. You know, being out here in this amazing gorgeous campus of Mount Greylock Regional School, we're a distance from Williams College, which, you know, if we had a helicopter shuttle, would probably be really easy. Or, you know, a Tesla tube that connected our campus to that campus. But we don't have those, so we, we really wanna, you know, it's thinking through, and, and interestingly enough, I think this is gonna show up in, in the town's long-term planning and the town's master planning work. Had the good opportunity to listen to a couple of Williams College students present their work on behalf of the town of Williamstown and work that they did with our seven-through-twelve students and with our elementary students at Williamstown Elementary, talk about what a challenge transportation continues to be in this part of the world for not only job potential, but grocery shopping potential. And certainly, we would add into the mix academic potential and the ability to do things that are not tied directly to this campus. And of course, there's also technological things that, that we have in the mix for how that can work. And then I think this is the final, I, I am sure I've gone well over my half-hour allotment. I, I thank you for that and looking at Joe's grin there on, on a bit of screen that has Joe in it. I could tell that's a very true statement. We, we, when we presented this last year, we talked about Panorama Survey. We, we have entered an agreement with Panorama Survey. I believe we have a three-year agreement with them that we're, that we have a contract with them. I have asked Ellie Cotts, one of our district-level administrators, because I have been spinning my wheels on that mostly through a lack of technological know-how. I have asked Ellie to head that up, and thank goodness Ellie said yes. And so we will see that work begin to really take form. And we think in the late winter, early spring of this year, we'll have our first student surveys out. And then we'll be building on family surveys and, and teacher and staff surveys as well. And that, we'll, we'll have presentations about that, not only for the school committee, but, but more for families in each individual school across the district. Because we want people to, to be really comfortable with, with what we're asking of their children. As we center on, you know, last October, we had, we had the amazing opportunity to have Courtney Tunis present her Listening and Learning Project. This is really the next organic step, is to be able to collect some of that data and have students report out in their own voice, have our families report out in their own voices, what their experience is in the district, and have our teachers and staff be able to do the same. So that remains some work that we've made incremental gains on, but we're, but we're far from being. And with that, that is the sort of, you know, tweaks to the vision, but also just a brief update of where we are with some of this stuff. And happy to have any questions. And, and I do thank you, you know, we're, we, we made the decision to, to put out a district improvement plan that really, really actually means something for the kids we're here to serve. And none of it is fast and none of it is easy. If it were just about ticking the boxes that, yep, we did that, yep, we did that, yep, we did that, oh, we did all of that, now we're better. That would be the approach that I think would make the superintendent look better and more in command of what her or his work is. And it would maybe make the district look better on the surface, but I think our our efforts to attack real stuff that actually matters to families, and it matters now, and it'll matter five years from now, or it'll matter 10 years from now, that we're doing this stuff and doing it right. That requires some patience and understanding on the governing body of the school district, and I thank you for that, for that patience, for that understanding, and for that vision that this is a great school district, and we do some great work, but we still have lots of room to be even greater for greater numbers. So thank you for all of those things that you do and that you are, that allow us to be and do these things. So thank you, thank you all. Christina, that's it for my report.
Thank you. I'm guessing you're going to have some questions.
Okay. Julia?
So I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question, and if this is a discussion we should have elsewhere, somebody, please tell me. We had, when we think about diving into this, I guess I wonder where I'm always going to wonder, what do you need from us? These are important, aggressive, challenging, difficult goals. And they're the right, I agree, they're the right goals. I think embedded in all of this is this equity, and I loved how you said, being a better district for more students. Whatever your last line was, was really fabulous. So it's not just, you know, we're really trying to improve for all students. And so the question is, where how do we help as a school committee? And importantly, I know I've spoken, you know, we've talked about what we will do at the retreat and where we might dive in and really trying to try to flesh out, what does great look like? What does, you know, what is the work behind the scenes? So we can more deeply understand the work of the administration, so that we can also really identify where we can support you. So I guess my question is, and all of that, is where is the area that would be most beneficial if we dive into it as a committee to support you?
Well, I'll start at a little higher level and then get down to that last question with what will probably be an unsatisfactory response. You know, having worked with a lot of individual school committee members on several different school committees over the years, it's really a key piece of the work is to have a group of people who as individuals, and as importantly, if not more, as a group, keep circling back to the things that are most important, almost no matter what the conversation is. And I could certainly, we could certainly go back through minutes and identify places where this committee has said, okay, that's interesting, or that's good. What about this chunk of the equity issues embedded in that thought or that direction? You know, whether it's the budget or various plans that we have going forward, or school trips that the middle and high school is taking, there is a focus from the governing board, and in thinking even about subcommittee meetings, there is a focus on how will this impact everybody? And then there's a focus on how will this impact individuals who comprise the everybody? And this particular board's dedication to that is people, your lack of, your lack of hesitancy to say it or call something out, that's a huge help. It keeps us focused as an administrative team, it holds me accountable, it holds us accountable, and it also, you know, is directive of what the vision needs to be and what the vision needs to encompass. Like, where a good diving endpoint is, and I would think, thinking through as we head into working to identify a date for our retreat, and maybe wanting to take a really deep dive on one of these goals of defining what this great look like, what are the bullet points under excellence that define excellence? It will certainly be one of the goals that is aimed at equity. You know, it won't be school start times, that's that we could go round and round and round and round about. So, you know, I'm not quite clear on where exactly to go with that, I would welcome any feedback, but the good news, I think, for all of us, and I think the good news for the community is that if you look at our conversations month after month after month after month, they are driven by a purposeful desire to increase equity, increase opportunity, and increase a sense of belonging for everybody that we're here to serve. So to me, that's a, and I think it's very specific and strategic on the part of the elected school committee, but it but it's not the way it is everywhere, and I think we should all be grateful for that. Jose?
Thank you, Jake, and I'll just reiterate my gratitude, as always, for your very, very thoughtful forward-looking presentation. You started off showing us some, I think, and as you alluded to, very distressing data about what seems to be a lack of teachers presently or in the pipeline for the Commonwealth. And what I hear is about is how you suspect this trend will impact our district, and whether you think we as a district need to be, you know, are we seeing impacts now, whether it be through long-term substitute teaching, the need for that, or, you know, replacing positions for folks who have retired and the like? Are you seeing a need for us to respond now to this situation? And are we, do you foresee us needing to go about recruiting differently in the future?
I am concerned, as I have been throughout my entire career as a superintendent, even going back to my days as an assistant principal that did quite a bit of teacher recruitment and hiring in central Virginia. I am concerned about that, the challenge of making sure that the that the adults that our kids are seeing are more representative of who our kids and their families are. It was, if you walk into the main lobby of Williamstown Elementary School right now, there's a really, really nice display on the second bulletin board that you come from, that is all of the Williams College students who do work in Williamstown Elementary School. And it's an incredibly diverse group, and I was standing there admiring that with Geraldine Chen at my side, who I think made that beautiful display. And we were talking about that it really, one of the most powerful pieces of the work that the Williams students come in and do as neighbors in the community in Williamstown Elementary, is that they are representing, in some cases, diversity that we simply don't have on our own school and district staff. It's vital, vital work. It also serves as vital connective tissue between, you know, the big academic presence in Williamstown and the rest of Williamstown. To me, it's just a wonderful thing, and I'm grateful for those young folks every time I see them, and grateful for what they mean to our kids. So I am concerned about that piece, our ability to recruit, attract, pay, and maintain a more diverse workforce. Look, just straight up and being totally transparent, as I always try to be, we are among the higher-paying school districts for teaching positions in Berkshire County, if not Western Massachusetts. We will, almost always for teaching positions, have applicants. And we will have, most of the time, excellent applicants. And I can look across just the hires that have been done in the last three years that I've got to welcome firsthand, and I think that's true. I think there are other positions within the district that, just quite frankly, we need to get a little more realistic about showing them that we value them through what they make. I think we have some administrative positions like that. To be honest, hiring paraprofessionals that are of the caliber of folks that we want to come here and stay here is challenging. So I hate to say it, because it's a really cliche answer, but for every position that we have, paying people is one of the most hands-on, you know, active, visible, tactile ways, we have to say that we value. I also, having said that, showing people that you respect them, value them, treasure them, cherish them, and respect that they need to have a voice in how things happen here goes a long way too. And that's another way that this school committee is supportive of our vision of how we need to be as an administration, because, you know, money talks, but feeling like you're respected and loved and valued, both as a professional and as a human being, also speaks a long way. But I think, Jose, you know, it's a very real concern. I think the concern in some districts that are less attractive to work in because of pay or because of the challenges that a certain community may present, that we don't necessarily present, I think it's really frightening. I think it's really frightening, the lack of young people that want to go into this profession. There's a lot of attention paid to, and whether the data bears it out or not, I don't know, but there's a lot of attention being paid to the burnout of classroom teachers after, you know, three years into a pandemic. And that's really important, and we're mindful of that as we use the gas and the brake as we drive this organization as an administration. But to me, the real panic should be at what's coming next. And we are not immune, we are not immune.
Thank you.
I can't see everybody, does any?
I don't see any other hands, Jake.
Okay. Well, I thank you all for your tremendous patience in letting me get through that.
Thank you. That was great, and we'll just make sure in the future, when we know we're presenting the district improvement plan too, make the minute mark a little bit longer for you.
I would think at this point, you would know that a Jake 30 minutes is a rest of the planet 60, but I'm working, we're all works in progress.
Noted.
Comedians call it a tight 70.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the finance subcommittee report. So I will turn it over to the chair of that subcommittee, Carrie.
Thanks, Christina. So it's actually a good segue, because a lot of the way that a school committee can address the priorities of the district is through the budget. And we're actually, I think, needing to get some documents to the school committee, and we're needing to see some reports in the finance subcommittee that we just haven't gotten around to yet, like the first quarter report and the year-end report and those kinds of things. So you're going to see those coming up, but my concern right now, and I'm just going to say this out loud, listening to all the conversation, is that we get in front of a budget timeline. So in years past, we've put together a budget timeline so that the school committee can know what's happening, when we're going to see the school improvement plan or the school council recommendations, that kind of thing. So that's something that we can work on in the finance subcommittee, is the budget timeline for FY '24. And we also, and this is just a question, we used to have a rolling agenda for the school committee. I don't know if we still have one of those, but it's actually super helpful for things like budget timeline, because it reminds us when we should be looking at certain documents, both in subcommittee and at the school full committee. The last one that I was able to find was 2122. So I'm not sure if we've done one recently, but I think I find it helpful. I don't know about other school committee members, but I think within that rolling agenda or master calendar, whatever we want to call it, I would also like to set up with Joe either another tab or another section or separate document, or a document within the document, just on the budget, so that we can map out where we are now, where we need to be by the time we get to budget approvals. Because there's a lot of work that gets done behind the scenes, but we need to make sure that some of that work at least comes forward so that the school committee and the school community can know about the work that's being done and what direction it's headed. So I don't have as much a report as just some thoughts on the work that the finance subcommittee needs to do with the finance department at the school and with the school administration to keep us all on track.
Great, thanks, Carrie, and you and I can work on that master calendar or the rolling calendar, I know it exists. We just need to get it in everybody's hands.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions for Carrie? Thank you, Carrie. Next up on the agenda is policy and governance subcommittee report, and so we will turn it over to the chair of that committee, Jose.
Thank you, Christina. This was our first meeting without Carrie, and in spite of, we met on November 30th, and in spite of Julia's best efforts, it was a listless, aimless meeting, but we ended up getting there, Curtis was very patient. We have two policy amendments that are edits to existing policies that we would like to put forward for first reads. The first is policy BDE on subcommittees of the school committee. We were inspired by our amazing chairperson, Christina, look at this. So we will go ahead and, well, there's no need for me to read this, but since it's the shortest of the two, I'll go ahead and volunteer myself to provide a first read for the edits to policy BDE.
Jose, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but may I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I do apologize. And I should have called you rather than depending on it. So I think what we discovered looking at our current policy for adopting policy is that a policy change goes out first as an informational item. So it's out there now for all the school committee members to have. Then there is a first read, so it actually is like a two or three-meeting process. And this, like on the agenda, it doesn't say vote, so I'm not sure, and those of you that are parliamentarians can maybe help us out a little bit, but we can do the first read, those of you that are parliamentarians can maybe help us out a little bit, but we can do the first read. Or we can do tonight just as an informational that you have it, do a first read next time and then a second read adoption. But, but we discovered that that there's, go ahead Carrie.
I have a question on that. Is that true of policy revisions or, or new policies? Because I think for policy revision, and maybe we can just kind of decide this amongst ourselves. A first read is perfectly fine and there is no vote on a first read anyway. So, but for a new policy, I could see how having the information out there prior to a first read could be beneficial. I, I worry about sort of dragging the whole process out for so long when we're trying to actually get stuff done. So I mean, I understand that there are reasons for the gradual process, but I wonder if at least with existing policies and revisions to them, we could just start with a first read.
What I'm hearing through this, sorry Stephen, is, uh, it sounds like Jake, the policy and governance subcommittee might need to look into this at our next policy and governance subcommittee.
I think Joe has some feedback, Jose.
Thank you. Sorry, Joe didn't see you.
As the policy, as the two policies on both adoption as well as amendment of policies reads, adoption and amendment are treated the exact same way. There are three step process where the first step is to get a proposed policy or amendment to an Apollo, uh, to a policy into a packet so that both the school committee as well as the public potentially could say, oh, look, I need to read this. I need to start to process it with, on, on my own or a, as the public. The second step is to just read it and to say, are there any amendments to the amendment or to the policy that people want to make? And then the third meeting is to adopt, which I, I agree with Carrie that in the case of an amendment, sometimes requiring three separate meetings to, to have that take effect could be, you know, it, it could definitely drag along. I would also say that I believe this policy was adopted before we had a full policy subcommittee. We used to have policy liaisons that would work with the superintendent and would get things into packets. So revisiting makes, to, to me personally, all the sense in the world, but that we, we were just as an administration looking at the policy and saying, how do we make sure we follow it as it's written right now?
So can I follow up just for the clarifying question? Does that mean that we can't suggest edits in this meeting?
The, the way the policy reads, I'm just reading it directly. It says information item, just distribution with agenda. That that's the, the first step.
Interesting.
And, and, and the challenge is that if it's in the packet but not even mentioned on the agenda, who's, it, it's more difficult to actually notice that it's there. But yeah, I, I think this is one where it makes plenty of sense to, to revisit it and to potentially amendment through, amend it through a three step process, but.
We'll get there eventually, in other words.
More work, Jose.
We'll get there eventually. Stephen, you have your hand up. Stephen, are you there?
Yes, um, so just a quick comment. Um, I agree with what's been said that for a lot of things, you're having three meetings spanning at least two months is a long period of time. I think it's essential that we have at least two meetings, a first read and a second read. Because a lot of times there's, you know, unexpected or unintended consequences and by giving you have people a chance to go home, think about things, giving a chance for members of the community to reach out are extremely important. And then if we are able to make specific comments about these, I will share some later tonight. If not, I will send them for the next meeting.
Thank you, Stephen. Well, this could be very, very short and sweet. Other than please, when you have time, look at the, uh, the edits to existing policies, BDE and CBI. I think it's all I'm allowed to say. And if you have comments or I guess I can't even say that, please look at them. I think it's all I can say. Enjoy the read. We look forward to putting this on the agenda in an upcoming school committee meeting. Stay tuned. That's it for me Christina.
And I, I really apologize for the curve ball and I, I believe both of these, I don't think either of these particular policies are hugely timely, like time sensitive. I don't think it's going to impact kids or teachers or families. But we can work to get some clarity on this. And Jose, I do apologize for the
No Jake, I, I have
curve ball.
No, no, I have a fuzzy memory that you gave me a heads up and I, and I, uh, and I ignored that heads up, but it does present an issue when, you know, given our monthly school committee meetings, presuming we could have a, an ad hoc meeting here and there if policies needed, you know, an amendment to policies or new policies needed to be addressed in a timely fashion, but with what we have on paper, uh, the fastest this process could ever have, take places is over the course of three months. So it's, it's very slow, almost draconian. So I think, uh, I think I'm eager to see, to see us discuss this in the next policy and governance subcommittee. But that's all I've got Christina, unless there are any, any other feedback. I don't even know. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
That was great. Thank you. More to think about in policy and governance.
Christina, I can barely hear you or other people having that issue?
Oh, sorry.
I had that trouble as well.
My fault. I put my microphone up because I was coughing and I didn't want to do that in people's ears.
I thought it was just my connection.
Can you hear me better now?
Yep, thanks.
Next up is the field and track project committee report.
All right, I'll start off. In my love of timelines, I asked Joe if he would put together a timeline for the school committee on the milestones that we are to expect in the track and field project. And he did that, so I'm gonna ask him to run through it with you all, maybe even share your screen, Joe, so that folks on the other side could see it.
Absolutely. I think I was prepared to do that. All right. Can you all see my screen here? And, and this is in your packet too. If it's, if it's too small to see, I apologize. So we, we tried to memorialize what we know will happen over the next few months or we hope will happen over the next few months with respect to the field and track project. Starting with next week, next Tuesday, um, the project committee is going to meet to get another update on the construction document development set as well as prepare for appearing before the ZBA, the Williamstown ZBA next Thursday. So Tuesday's meeting coming up will be to, to work in, in more detail on the construction documents and prepare for a Thursday evening meeting with the Williamstown ZBA, the zoning board of appeals. Then on Thursday, December fifteenth, so next Thursday at seven PM, a portion of that project team will be at Williamstown Town Hall going before the ZBA for the items within the project that requires ZBA review which are roughly defined by we're modifying enough surface of the campus that that immediately triggers a review by the ZBA of, of the plans overall, our lighting plan as well as, as how we're impacting trees of a certain size on our campus. Those are all things that, that need ZBA review. Currently as the project team is working and, and working with Williamstown Town Hall on it, we don't foresee any major issues, but at the same time, the whole point of the review is to be able to, to go through things and, and understand how it's impacting the town and the town relative to what it, what it views as being good and proper developments within the town. So that will happen next Thursday. Then project teams, subgroups will continue to work over the course of the, the following weeks on, on detailed points of the construction document set. But the week of January third through sixth, at some point in there, probably on the fourth, right now is what we're expecting. The design team will share a draft construction document set. So hundreds of pages of, of detail with design up top and then specifications for what a contractor would be expected to do in order to fulfill that design. That will be shared in draft form with the project committee, but we're going to make sure to share that entire set with the full school committee. And by extension, it will be, it will be public. So that the, um, the design team can receive feedback from, from all corners. The project committee will meet as a body on Tuesday, January tenth to provide their detailed feedback into that draft document set. In that same timeline, we're hoping that the school committee will submit questions and comments to the design team. And we'll manage that in a way that does not violate any, any open meeting law rules so that the school committee can provide its input during that timeframe. So the design team and the, the project management team can either take that into account if there are things that they had not incorporated into that draft set or respond to those questions to, to create greater clarity around them. But then with the full school committee meeting on January twelfth, that's the point where the construction documents, as they stand at that point, will be part of the packet material for the school committee. The design team will hope that the school committee says, yes, with any pending revisions, please go on ahead and continue your, your polishing and, and you're, you're getting it done so that those can go out to bid the week of January twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, which would probably mean that on Thursday, January nineteenth, we would notify the state of our intent to publish and distribute construction documents for the purpose of contractors developing bids. And then that week of January twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, there would be the, the process of those being posted newspapers and on websites and then contractors being able to request copies of those documents. So that would unfold during that week. If we did that, then bids would be due on or around February twenty-second. Once bids are due, that means that we would have hopefully a large number of highly qualified bidders who submitted their numbers and their proof of their evidence of their ability to perform the contract as it, as it's out there. And that would be the point at the end of February where the school committee would meet to review the bids and to either select a winning bidder or to reject all bids. Depending upon how the school committee views, views those bids. So that's the timeline between now and the end of February, you know, a number of these things are pending votes prior to them. So it's not as though this is just set in stone as the way it, it will be. But I should also note that we do have other things potentially pending where depending upon our final drainage plan, we might need to go before Williamstown's Conservation Commission. And with respect to our well water work, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, will also receive a filing from us potentially to notify them of, of a change in use for, for our well water. So that's what we've got over the next few months, Carrie. I'm not sure if I missed anything often.
No, that's, that's great. And it's worth noting that, um, you know, this process is going to take place during budget season. And so the school committee may want to schedule a special meeting in March or thereabouts for review of these bid documents, or not the bid documents, the bids themselves. So I don't think it's going to fit into a regular school committee meeting, especially because we've got all the budget stuff going on at that time. So just a heads up. Questions? Yeah, Curtis.
Uh, one teeny tiny note, the Thursday, February twenty-second, uh, the twenty-second is a Wednesday. And I only know that because it's vacation week. Uh, but I would be all in favor of meeting on the Monday after vacation week if we needed to to look at these bid documents to keep for this process moving forward.
Thanks. Jose?
Thanks Carrie. I know this isn't, uh, this, I've got a couple of questions. The first one is with regards to, uh, how, how much of the gift remains? Um, and do we have any, any information on that from, from the college?
So I'm actually going to talk about that in the next section, which is about fundraising.
Okay, then the second question then, and, and Joe, uh, at the end of his presentation alluded to the potential for permitting from the Williamstown Conservation Committee. And there's potentially in addition to the, you know, amendments to the groundwater withdrawal, the DP permits for discharge might be required as well. And I know we don't have the plans before us and I know the next time we're expected to see the plans is when, um, I think a lot of important decisions need to get made. Could you walk us through, Joe, how we're going to make decisions or how the decision, what the decision-making process will look like to determine whether and how we're going to to, to, you know, to get these permits that we might need. Thanks.
Yep, uh, with respect to the Conservation Commission, um, it's, it's a fairly binary decision point as to if, if we trigger certain review requirements for the Conservation Commission, which we, we work closely with Williamstown Town Hall and trying to make sure we're, we're following every rule the way we should. Um, if we trigger those requirements, we will get on to the Conservation Commission's schedule either later this month or, or next month for their review. With respect to the DEP, we know that if we're going to use our existing well water in, in a different way that we need to, um, put a filing in with them, which is more of a notification of a change of use than it is of a, of a presentation or a an extensive review of, of our plans that, that could be more subjective. And so prior to us being able to submit that kind of a document to the DEP, we need the exact documents that would be put forward by our civil engineer to to submit, uh, which we're just not, not at the point right now in December to, to be able to do that. But it's something that, that everybody on that project team is very aware of and, and will do in, at the earliest possible moment.
And just to clarify, are, are we, and, uh, or could you, could you tell us whether we would find ourselves in, in a position to go out to bid without all of the required permits in place?
The only, well, I should respect the idea that the ZBA next week, next Thursday, i- if there is something that surprises us that, that needs to go back and, and be revised and prior to receiving the ZBA's approval, that would then carry us into January, most likely for, for a follow-on meeting with them. In that case, we would need to see whether or not we were able to, to have that meeting with the ZBA and gain their, their blessing. Prior to wanting to go out to bid, um, with respect to the Conservation Commission, we're, again, we're hopeful that any meetings with the Conservation Commission would happen prior to going out to bid. As it currently stands, the, um, the ROPM, Skanska is indicating that if we do need to continue conversations with the ZBA or with the Conservation Commission into when we go out to bid, they would design the bidding Bidding period such that we could issue amendments. To those construction documents. During that bidding period so that every bidder would know. That they need to revise what they're going to bid. Prior to the bids being due. So that we would not be in a situation where the bids had come in. And then the plan had changed. And it would be subject to. A much more difficult conversation around. How to manage. That change. So that that's the, that's the plan as it currently stands. Um, and and again, there were a number of gating meetings and. And developments there between now and when we go out to bed as well as when we would receive bids.
Joe, can I just follow up on that? How common is it to use that kind of a timeline or that kind of a process where you might? File um, an amendment? Do we have a sense of that?
I think. We as a school district don't do this. Every day. Every month, every year. Our OPM and our design team feel. Very comfortable with with what. Our trajectory is right now. At the same time. They have been fairly clear over many months that. In their minds, given that we as a school district have said that we want to. Construct this track and field next year, if at all possible. That. They are designing a timeline and working with that goal of making sure that happens. So I would say it's i- it's not the most. Peaceful and and slow paced of of timelines, but at the same time, they have not expressed any discomfort with. With how we've put this forward. So I, you know, I. That's the best qualified answer that I can give here.
Other questions?
Sorry, just. I think I'm sorry, Christina, you didn't, you didn't call on me. I I. Heard you speak, but I raised my hand just to confirm he did call on me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I think I called you Christina as well, not Carrie. I think I'm worried about where I'll be in a month's time. And I'm I'm. Worried that. We as a. School committee will be faced with. Final designs. And will be asked to approve those designs to go out to bid. And I understand that the. Design team. Can include some. Alternate. Designs that that companies could provide, I guess, alternate bids for. I think I I'm not sure if I'm capturing the the lingo right. But I'm generally concerned about. You know, things that the design team can't predict. It does predicate them being able to predict what, you know. The Conservation Commission might ask with regards to. Permit conditions or changes in 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 the design. Time feels tight. You know, in terms of being able to get this done when we'd like to get it done. And I I guess I, you know, I just want to air these, these, you know, sincere concerns that, you know, we are, we're asking a lot. Of the process to get this done when we, you know.
We have been asking a lot of the process. It's true all along. You're absolutely right. Um, and I think. As a result. The, you know, what we saw for schematic design was actually pretty detailed. That's the advantage of of moving the process along is that we had more detail than we might have gotten. Had we been just, you know, moving at a slower rate. So the town actually has a lot more information than what they might have received at this point as well. We've submitted schematic. You know, a detailed schematic design to. The town, they've had it um, far in advance of the ZBA uh, meeting. And I think we'll know. At the ZBA meeting whether there are issues that we've overlooked. You know, that's the purpose of these meetings in addition to just making sure that everything is copacetic with. How we're going about doing things. Um, if at any point the school committee says. This just isn't feeling right. We need to slow down, then we should consider um, potentially even waiting a season. Because we're gonna. I mean, the goal here is to hit. The prime time for the construction companies to be bidding. That's the goal. But if for whatever reason, the committee feels that we need more time for with these documents. That we need more time to make sure we've got our funding in order. Then we can pause. And we can plan. For the next bidding season. But that's what it would mean is probably a one year delay.
A quick, quick apology, but it's eight twenty two and I unfortunately need to sign off.
Hi, Julia.
Bye.
Curtis, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just trying to point at Julia in this sort of Brady Bunch way.
Gotcha. That's kind of what I thought. Let me check. So if it's okay, we can move into a very brief discussion of funding and funding plans. We are going to come back to you. We, Joe, Jake and I are going to come back to you in January with. More of a strategy. Around um. Funding for this project. But the quick update is that uh, we are in the process of applying for a CPC grant. Which is through the town of Williamstown. It's a Community Preservation Act funding application. The three of us are working on it. We are applying for not an insignificant amount of funding. And it is something that um, has. Been known to happen in our community that projects like this are are funded by the CPC and we're very. Hopeful of of getting their support. Jake is planning to meet with the town manager. In the pre sort of meeting process that is recommended. When applying, applying for one of the CPC grants. Jake, Joe and I met and we went over a list of potential granting agencies and foundations. That we might apply to in support of this project. And um, I think there are even a number of them that haven't made it onto the list yet that we just need to do more research. Um, and talk to folks uh, within the athletic. Departments to see what what else might be out there. The Williams College gift, we're in the process actually of setting up a meeting. With the finance uh, folks at the college to talk about the best way to think about. The availability of the gift. In FY twenty four, there is no question that we will have access to the gift despite the budget constraints. That we're seeing at the college. The gift is not uh, subject to those constraints. Uh, the college is essentially holding it in trust for us. What is variable is the amount that will be available in the gift that is. Subject to market constraints, right? So our gift is invested with the endowment. The endowment went way up, then the endowment went. Down and whether it's up again or further down by the time we actually need to use these mon- these uh, these funds. Is really hard to project at this point. Um, so. I'm not sure how. Well, we will be able to get a, get a handle on what is available to us in the Williams Fund and therefore how much. Else we need to raise, how how much additional funding we need to raise for this project. But what we will do in meeting with the colleges to get some guidance from them on how best to think about. What is available? When and how best we can, you know, draw on those funds. So that's kind of where we are on the fundraising. I don't know if. Joe or. Jake, you want to add anything to that? But. We're, I I would just say that everything is in process right now. And we're, we're, we're doing some, you know, some, the work that we need to do.
That's great, Carrie. It's 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 a lot of work and it's really appreciated, but. It's for a good cause.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Carrie? Hey, moving on to the business administrator report, Joe.
So I I noted that there's five minutes allotted to this agenda item. It's, it's not one sixth of the importance of the district improvement plan. Or or one third of the importance of the uh, track and field project, but it does need to come before you as a public body. Because it's a request to execute a lease that's in excess of three years. This is a, uh, Carrie?
I'm just going to move it so we can talk about it. I moved the approval of the lease.
Millisecond.
I think Curtis beat you to it, Steve.
So it's moved and seconded. Thank you both. Uh, Pitney Bowes, uh, mail. Mail stamping uh, processing machine for Lanesboro Elementary School. It's a five year lease. The five year lease um, is significantly. Less costly on a monthly basis than the three year lease. Uh, there's no real fear of this stuff going out of date or. Somehow our needs changing over the course of that period of time. So we're bringing it forward uh, as a, as a. Reasonable measure. Um, but I'll, I'll just open it up to discussion because it is there in your packet. It's just as thrilling as I thought it would be. I. I'll just leave it to you, Christina, to to call for the vote.
No questions from the committee? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Oh, Conry, I I get to go first.
Constantine, I.
Elfin by an eye.
Green eye.
Noah, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Next up on the agenda is superintendent contract intent to enter negotiations.
I'll, I'll jump in on this one and just very briefly. Say tha- thank you for pushing this off. It's, it's like eight thirty, not nine thirty or quarter to ten like it was the last time this came up. Um, and and I don't have that much to say other than, you know, my, my. Initial three year contract expires at the uh, end of this year. So as of June thirty. Uh, twenty twenty three. Those of you that were on the committee will remember I started on November fourth of twenty twenty, I believe. And uh, so just really completed my, my second full year and now into the third. School year and full year. And um, I. It it's really been a tremendous honor and a pleasure to get to serve in the school district and. I would would love to. Have an offer to receive a. Another new contract I would, I would put out there as I have before that. Although, although there are, there are inherent risks in entering into a longer term contract, I think we we all. Pay attention to what goes on around us and and. I have not in my twenty nine years of public service ever been in a position to to need a. An early exit from a place or 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 a non. An an exit which which I was was somehow fighting uh, for for lack of a better term. And so I I would, while there are inherent risks, I would, I would just suggest to you and then and then as a committee, you can act on it the way you wish. That legally, a a community is allowed to to offer a superintendent a six year contract. It would be my honor and pleasure to. To sign off on a six year contract. Um, and and bring the the consistency and and leadership to the school district that I I had found over the years serves. Towns well, serves families well, serves students well and serves the the folks that do the work in school buildings every day and in the district office. And uh, so. I thank you all for for the time you've allowed me to serve here and I hope that we can can reach an agreement to to have some. Some more years together because it's a real privilege to be here. So, thank you.
I'm happy to make a motion so we can have um, further discussion. Thank you, Jake. I would like to make a motion to dele- to delegate the negotiations of the superintendent contract to the chair under the following guidelines. A draft of the six year contract will be presented in executive session to the school committee. At the school committee meeting on January twelfth, which is our regular session meeting. The school committee will come back to open session to vote on the contents of the contract. Steve, do you still want a second?
I'll, I'll second and then I'll just have a discussion on it.
Okay, discussion.
So would you want? The, the only concern I have about putting on, you know, someone else or two other people with you is as soon as it's two people. Does that make it a meeting that has to be scheduled?
Wait, sorry. The, I think it's the chair and the superintendent. Who are having, who are working out the contract draft.
Right.
Bringing it to the school committee. So that doesn't require any posting at all. That's just.
No, no, that's what I was saying is that if we put someone on it to help her. Then that would require scheduling meetings and everything.
No, I don't think so because it's not a quorum and it's not a subcommittee. But I think it's. I don't, I don't know if Christina feels the need or Jake feels the need to have another person.
I don't think so. I th- I think we have a good working relationship and can hammer out the details together. Bring it forward.
I'm, I'm fine with that based on our discussions in the past. But just wanted to make sure that if you did want additional. Help that it was available.
Thanks, Christina. Don't get him sick, okay? No need like in person while you're.
No, trust me. I'm being blamed for all sorts of things right now, but I stay behind my mask when I'm. Out in the real world. Okay, any further discussion? Jake. Thank you and um, all in favor?
Jose, woman.
Oh, Jose, did you want to say something? Go for it.
Why, why not? Why not? Uh, no, just wanted to clarify that uh. We, in terms of the timeline, is this, well, I don't know, is this something we can expect? To hear back from at our next full committee meeting? Is that what we're looking at? Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, all in favor?
I would just like to note that two of our administrators popped on as soon as this. As soon as this topic came up. So I assume that's a show of support.
Yeah, that did not go unnoticed, that's for sure. Okay, all in favor? Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin by an eye.
Green eye.
Noah, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, I'm going to run through our upcoming meetings quickly, but with clarity. We have a field and track project committee. December thirteenth at four PM. A finance. Subcommittee meeting, December fifteenth, December twenty ninth. January twelfth, all at four PM. We have a policy and governance subcommittee meeting, meeting January eleventh at five PM. And our next regular session, school committee meeting is January twelfth at six PM.
And Christina, could I just note that, um, and I'm thinking about Jose here in particular, but this goes for anyone. The school committee members are welcome to attend the track and field um, committee meetings. As a viewer and, you know, you might. Hear some of your questions. Answered there. Um, so that meeting that we're having, that's. I don't know which meeting that we're, that we're talking about, but we are.
December thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah. But also just really want to. Emphasize getting questions in ahead of time will help us to respond. And that was our bad last time, you know, last time we asked for. Feedback, we didn't ask for feedback in advance of the meeting. So just really wanting to make sure that we do the. feedback. We didn't ask for feedback in advance of the meeting. So just really wanting to make sure that we do the process right this time. So, okay. Thank you, Carrie. Joe, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I would also ju- just to reinforce that even more, that there are also working group meetings on other like lower level details. And if anybody within this committee or within the public has an interest in a specific thing, um, never hesitate to reach out to us as an administration so that we can either include you in the conversation or just make sure that we voice your concern. Um, because there's there's work happening daily. The project subcommittee is meeting every every week to two weeks. The full school committee only meets every month. So, you know, there are different levels of granularity that are typically conveyed and and communicated. And so we we'd love to just make sure that every every concern and ideas incorporated as best we can. So don't don't hesitate to to reach out.
Curtis.
Who, what specific point person should people reach out to if they have a question, concern, thought, et cetera?
I'm going to do Brady Bunch here. It's Joe.
Sure, yeah, I'll 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 make sure to be responsive to any anybody on the committee or in the public who um who expresses any anything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, for that clarification. Um, I do not have any other items to discuss. Do we have any agenda requests for the January twelfth meeting? Okay, I see none. So um I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with no intent to return to open session pursuant to M G L, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A one to discuss. Do I read this whole thing? Carrie?
Yeah.
The reputation is weird because.
Read it if you if you.
No, it's fine. It wa- it just, the font got all weird on me, so I was um section twenty one A one to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual. Section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. All units as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the committee and the chair, so declares.
Um, was that a motion? You just need a sec. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Curtis. All in favor? Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin by an eye.
Green eye.
Noah, I.
Thank you. It's eight thirty nine P M and we are going to move into executive session with no intent to return. Um.